Good evening, everybody. Good evening. First, let me say I want to apologize. Councilwoman Garlatti is what, a little bit late? She will be here. But we can't start with the review session of the council, so we move right along. That way, Ms. Sherrill can get home quicker. Sorry, good evening, everybody. We have ordinance on second reading. 91401, Orders to amend and supplement the revised general orders under City of New Brunswick Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, 12, 210, Schedule 21. Mid-block crosswalks, Bishop Place, 402. Orders to amend and supplement the revised general orders under City of New Brunswick Title 12, Streets, sidewalks, and public places, Chapter 12, Point 28, Parks and playgrounds. Reason to regulate parking in Google Park on Rutgers football game days. 403, amended management salary ordinance for 2012 through 2014. There are no ordinances on first reading. We have resolutions. 401, approved agenda amendments. 402, approved payroll. 403, authorized refund from deep tax sales certificates. 404, approved off-premise raffle of 50/50 at the High Regency for the Diocese of the Tuchan Incorporated. Date is April 14, 2015. 405, authorized tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. 406, authorized refund to Michael I. Schnack, trustee for 19 US Highway 1 LLC. Due to tax court judgment on Block 703, Block 17, Point 10, 23, US Highway 1, amount of $10,000, 92537. 407, authorized refund to Robert D. Blau, attorney for Donald DeParras, due to tax court judgment in Block 242, Block 16, Point 03. 502, Jersey Avenue, Nicole Mount Bowden, $43,000, 979,800. 408, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Sigma Chi fraternity for Children's Amicable Network for days of Saturday and Sunday, September 26, 28, 2014, October 3, 5, 10, 11, 17, 18, 24, 25, 2014, alternate dates, Saturday and Sunday, September 27, 2014, October 4, 12, 19, 26, 2014. I don't think I left any day of the month out there. Time, 10:00 AM from 6:00 PM. Locations, College Avenue and Hamilton Street, Eastern Avenue and Hamilton Street, Eastern Avenue and Somerset Street, George Street and Hamilton Street, George Street and Somerset Street, George Street and Patterson Street, George Street and Bishop Place, George Street and Bayard Street, George Street and Lexington Avenue. Livingston Avenue. Yeah, I was gonna say, where is that? 410, authorize... I'm sorry. 409, authorized execution of tri-party agreement from Newsex County and Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. Reason, traffic signals at French Street and Joyce Kilmer Avenue. 410, authorized purchase by police department under state contract, A, S, 77560, from She International Corporation for annual software support and maintenance, not to exceed $66,000 by 13/98. 411, approved operation to advertise for furniture and winter three utility vehicles for Parks and Shades division. Specification numbers, 395-14P. 10... I'm sorry. 101412. Approved amendment of resolution R. 041419. Reason, October 12, 2014, additional streets to be closed. Requested by New Brunswick Recreation and New Brunswick Tomorrow. Location, 3.4 mile section of New Brunswick to be closed in current traffic for walk, run, skate, or ride bikes, bikes, and city streets for circlevia. Date is Sunday, October 12, 2014. Time, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Police extra duty. 413, approved chapter 159 budgeting service in New Jersey for FY... for year 2015, New Brunswick Penitent to Death and Safety Grant, amount is $15,000. 414, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by New Brooks Concrete Construction Company to install underground traffic signal conduits, junction boxes, and fender stations that connect with the New Brunswick Bike Race Project for George Street, Hamilton Street, Johnson Drive, Albany Street, Nielsen Street, George Street, and Albany Street. Dates, September 24 and 25, 2014, non-proportant, and October 4, 2014, and October 2, 2014. Time is 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. 415, approved rejection of bid authorization to advertise for Railroad Avenue pump station upgrade. Specification number 866-14. 416, approved award of contracts and rejection of bid with Schitt's School Nursery Incorporated for items EFG-I-LM, amount $8,520, which is our boat nursery corporation for items A, B, C, D, and H, street, amount is $19,694. Furnishers deliver trees for fall tree planting program. Specification numbers, 393-42P. 417, approved request for street closing of the park authority. Location, Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets for RWJ, Thornton Mall, and the Elbers. Date is Saturday, October 18, 2014. 6:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Police extra duty. 418, approved request for street closing requested by Mike's Sportside Bar and Grill. Location, Eld Row and Patterson Street and Bayard Street, Grand to Summer Food and Music Festival. The date is October 18, 2014. 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Police extra duty. 419, approved request for use of city sidewalk requested by Affinity Federal Credit Union. Location, sidewalk in front of 346 George Street for membership drive for grand opening at end of year. The date is Thursday, October 16, 2014, Friday, October 17, 2014, and Saturday, October 18, 2014. 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 420, approved amendment of resolution R. 091422, change order number one regarding state highway products for 2014 first and delivered regulatory signs. Specification number 852-14, you manage $205,500. Approval of this January will not constitute an increase of 20% or more than the amount of the original contract. 421, approval appointment of council, Lawrence Bitterman Esquire, for representation of Detective Michael Quip in matter of Timothy McDougal for Assailing Brunswick, not to exceed $1,000. 422, approved broadband cable agreement and rate of use... of right-of-way use agreement requested by CSC TKR LLC doing business as Cable Vision of Rockville Valley. Install installation of fiber optic cable. Location is Frank Street to service 53, 55, and 57 Patterson Street due to demolition of the Farron Park and Gate. 423, approved request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick City Market. Location is Miney Square Park and sidewalks on Albany Streets, Livingston Avenue, and George Street for enhancement of the running experience for visitors to New Brunswick. The units before, date is a Big Ten football game in Rockville. Date is Friday, October 3, 31, 11, 14, 2014. Saturday, October 4, November 1, November 15, 2014. Time is 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. 424, approved of the resolution R. 011443. Reason, provided inspection services for added assessments and labor replacement costs. Added assessment with reality of real appraisal company. Property inspection services and added assessments in 2014, not to exceed $4,000 bucks. 425, approved amendment of resolution R. 031315, additional copy over chartered in the amount of $550 for tacky sessions office, digital colored copier with G.G. Capital Information Tech solutions doing business as Rico USA, not to exceed $550. 426, approved place-to-place transfer expansion of licensed liquor license. Liquor license number 1214-33090-010. Name is Barwood Boys... Barwood Boys LLC. 427, approved amendment of resolution R. 011448. Reason, additional funds for ongoing projects in order to advance projects with completion with Hatch Mot with Donald Oldings Incorporated doing business as Hatch Mot with Donald LLC for 2014 engineering and support services for water utility, not to exceed $101,875. 428, approved rejection of bid authorization to rebid requested by Public Works of Water Utility for equipment and labor. Rebid specification number 391-14PR. 429, approved rejection of bid authorization to rebid requested by the Water Utility for Dean R. Canal West's middle water pumping stations upgrade. Specification number 245-12WR. 430, approved of resolution authorizing establishment of dedication... of a dedication by rider for parking proceeds dedicated to city parks. 431, approved request for use of city property requested by Hynek Tyson AIDS Foundation. Location, Royal Memorial Park for National Latino AIDS Anxiety Awareness Day. Date is Thursday, October 16, 2014, parade date is Thursday, October 23, 2014. Time is 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 432, approved request for street closing requested by Sedan Street and Form Church. Location, Drift Street between Sedan Street and Towne Street. Church is celebrated 130 years for services outside and small gatherings. Date is Sunday, October 12, 2014. Time is 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Police extra duty. 433, approved weapons base to advertise for 2014 sanitary sorting and CCMP inspection and manual inspection specification number 863-14. Any errors or omissions? Yes, sir?
Mr. McGinn, going back to resolution 101429, item number 21, where we are recommending rejection of bid. You all may well be aware of it, but what we learned is that the specs did not include a requirement that people disclose business activities with Iran. And it seems that... It seemed to us that that order we made it to is not totally clear whether it is. And if it was, only the one second bidder should comply with that. He can't allow that. We thought all the bidders had an even playing field. And that's why our recommendation had to be rejected.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any errors or omissions? Okay. Move into the court meeting order. Please call and roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti.
President.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming and Council President Escobar is absent today.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Court, has been placed on an appropriate book and voided by the City Hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Please stand up and pledge your allegiance.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving our armed forces overseas and for all our men and women who have lost their lives in any battle in the war. Thank you. We have minutes from August 6, 2014.
Do you get approval?
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Aye. Okay, we have ordinance on second reading. Ordinance 401. Ordinance of amendment supplement to the revised general orders under City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, 12, 210, Schedule 21, Mid-block crosswalks, Bishop Place. Anybody have any comments? Any member from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Anyone at all?
Move the ordinance.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes. Ordinance 402. Orders to amend and supplement the revised general orders under City of New Brunswick Title 12, Streets, sidewalks, and public places, Chapter 12, Point 28, Parks and playgrounds. Reason, to regulate parking in Google Park on Rutgers football game days. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes. 40... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. That's a 403. Amend the management salary ordinance. Any member from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Endards.
Next.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes. We have no ordinance on first reading. We have resolutions 401 to resolution number 433. Anybody from the public wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Anyone from the public on these specific resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes. We will now move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody has any public comments? You have five minutes to come up and address the council. Please take your name and address and please go onto the microphone where we would like to address the city council at this time. Anybody on any matter. Yes, sir. Step up.
Fred Howell, 21 Boys Road. Did you approve the ordinance for community organizer? Yeah?
Yes, you did. That was... That was the amendment to the management salary ordinance. That was the only amendment we were making, which was to add in that particular title.
Well, why do we need a community organizer? We have the best school system that money can buy, and everybody is entitled to go to Middlesex County College or there are so many other programs. Why would we need to pay somebody to be a rebel rouser and to go around to cause trouble? For what reason do we need somebody to organize? A salary like this has an increase in 24% just for the taxes that have to be taken out of his salary, which jumps a $36,000 salary up to $45,000. And then there's $700 or $800 a month for his health insurance, which has another $84,000... $8,400 on. You're at $51,000 at starting salary and almost $81,000 at top salary. What would this man or woman do that they don't do now by assistance in every department? We're going to go around dragging people to vote or to sign up for a program? I can't even drive on my street where my business is because the... The city has so many giveaways that what other... You're going to now bang on their door and say, "You know, you can get your electricity for free. All you have to do is go to 78 Jersey Avenue or 95 Jersey Avenue. You can get a free grant. We'll fix your whole house up for you. All you have to do is go to 95 Jersey Avenue and sign up." If they don't have... If a person doesn't have a child who has graduated from school or has the ability to use the school system, what do we have to drag people around for? I mean, is it no more than making sure the Democratic Party has more voters? It gets down to that. What are you going to do with it? We already have problems with employees of the city doing that in the past eight, 10 years ago. Now, we're going to have a person paid with taxpayer dollars to do this? What do they do? They... We have the best sports program in the world here. Kids have Codway's Avenue, Joyce Comer Avenue, Ugo Lo Park all over. Everything they... They're dragged all over the place. What... Who are we dragging around with the community organizers that they don't know? Especially since every program in the world is available through the school system to be a better person and a better citizen. Maybe it's because we don't have... All the people that we're now going to drag around with this community organizer are people who aren't citizens. But maybe we can make them citizens. We don't have to pay somebody to do that. They should want to do it, just like everybody else in the world has done. So what's the purpose of the job? And why shouldn't my taxes depend on for it?
The purpose of the new job that's being created?
Yeah. Why would we need it? We never had it before. All of a sudden, maybe the city needs one. For what?
Mr. Lattin?
The mayor and Dave Blevins, who runs our YSS program, thought that adding someone who could be helpful in gathering and encouraging resident participation in a lot of government activities was a very good idea. The person is not a troublemaker and is not going to be dragging people around by the ear and not dragging people to the polls. That is not the intention. It is to improve resident participation in many levels of government.
Well, if you go on the site that the council gives, every couple of weeks, there's great programs going on. You close off Joyce Comer Avenue for a whole day one time, and about maybe 300 people showed up. You go to the parade, and nobody shows up on Memorial Day. We should maybe cut it out because I've been going for longer than I can remember. And what are you going to do? What are you... All these programs are out there. If they're not going to be dragging them by their ear, they're going to be counseling people directly. And I may have used the wrong word, but you're paying somebody to go out and counsel people, "Hey, why don't you do this? Because we get government money" and all this other stuff if we get enough people out for this.
Well, it might... The individual might help people access government better and more easily and let them know what kind of programs and services we provide. I think the Joyce Kilmer closing that you speak of is a larger program called Ciclovia. It's designed to encourage people to get out and ride bikes and walk, and it's been a very successful program. And we're going to do another one this fall, actually, in October, I believe. I'm sorry.
October 12.
Okay. That's a good thing. We think that's a meaningful program.
This isn't a one-on-one conversation.
But enough people to get out and do it anyway. So why do we need an organizer to help? We have a lot of programs.
Just like the administrator said, this will help people be more aware. It's more of an awareness campaign. We're trying to get people out there and more involved in the things that they have in the greater city. Maybe some people don't know what's going on out there. This guy's going to be a recruiter to get people out there to get more involved in the things in the city. How could that be a bad thing?
I think it's... We don't have to pay somebody to do it. Believe me. We don't have to pay somebody to take advantage of everything that's out there. Maybe if everybody would take...
You own a business in the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Don't you pay your workers to do things?
Yes, we do.
Well, then, we... The business administrator and mayor feel that they need to get more people out. And for Mr. Blevins' office, they think this would be a great tool to add on to their team to get more people involved in the city and get more awareness going out. I think it's a good idea. It's only good if it works. So let's see what happens.
Why would... Can't we have volunteers to do that? I mean, we'll get people... You're cleaning the street when they park too long or have a ticket or something. Why couldn't those people that are instead of Saturday morning doing that go around and do these type of programs? We taught to do those programs, and we don't have to pay for it. I mean, you can paint in any way you want, but it's just a troublemaker to reorganize a certain party.
Okay. Well, that's the way you're painting it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment from the public tonight? Anybody else from the public? Step right up, sir. Open microphone. Open mic night for you. But you only have five minutes.
Okay, sure. So the... This is the public comment.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. You're scrawling with the missed resolutions.
It's okay. It's okay. Glad I made it in time. I wanted to ask for an update on, first, the police car that was in a crash, 904.
Okay. Was there a police car in a crash, 904? Captain?
Yes.
You got an update?
In regards to what?
What would somebody know, Mr. Brown?
I've asked a few questions about it. Is everybody okay? Who was the driver of the police car? And, you know, who was at fault?
Captain, was anybody injured?
There were injuries. There were serious injuries.
Okay. Is there... Was there investigation going on? What could you tell us that made you...
The police car was responding to a progress. They tried to cross over Route 18 and were struck by a car coming down 18. Police car was going against the red light. They did have the lights inside on. The two inside lanes of Route 18 did stop, but the person coming up the outside lane did not stop where the lights inside were and it wouldn't occur.
Thank you.
There's an accident. There was an accident, as far as the signing wall or no summoning is issued, anyone?
Thank you. Thank you.
Understood, and I noticed there's a new car number nine oh four, right? There's a different car that's replaced it.
I didn't know that. Is there a new nine oh four, Captain?
Probably, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I know more than we do.
I, I saw it, very quickly. Um, so, I wanna know, uh, regarding police cars, uh, there's a law passed that every car has to have a, um, every car, it's primarily for traffic stops, has to have a camera, dash camera. Do all our cars that are primarily used for traffic stops have a dashboard?
Yes. Captain? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, what I ask, is it true that the city's entertaining the idea of hiring a emergency management director?
Mr. Piven?
Not my knowledge.
Okay, and regarding emergency management, is the, is the emergency management council having any meetings?
Uh, I don't see Director Walls here this evening to answer that question, so I, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Brown. Does anybody know the answer? He's not here, I don't know the answer.
Okay, well, I'd humbly suggest that, um, a meeting be scheduled that's open to the public, that, uh, it still says on the city website that this group has meetings at ten AM every third Wednesday of the month, and, uh, to my knowledge, that's not happening. They should have at least one meeting open to the public, and, um, I'm disappointed that, uh, Councilman Fleming, the liaison to the Board of Ed, is not here tonight, is he at the, um, uh, the thing at the middle school for picking the new superintendent?
I don't know where he is, he didn't tell me where he was gonna be, I don't know where he is.
Okay. Uh, I'm disappointed that those things, that this meeting and that meeting conflict. I think that that's the point of having a liaison, is that those conflicts won't happen if you, if you, you plan accordingly, so that people don't have to choose between coming to the city council and, and, you know, having a voice in who the next superintendent is.
That makes sense to me, too.
Thank you, and, and the last question I have is regarding the, uh, planning board, um, it's true that the planning directors recommended the planning board replace their attorney for an upcoming hearing, uh, on October fourteenth at the, uh, the Free Holder Room about seventeen Mine Street, and can I just ask for the record, why is the planning director, um, asking the, the, uh, planning board attorney to, or, they're asking the planning board to replace their attorney?
Uh, I don't, is, is any of this, does anybody respond to any, any of this?
That's not what they're asking, I understand it.
What, what?
There'll be a temporary replacements without meeting, without hearing, without one application.
They're gonna have a temporary, uh, attorney, for that just one hearing?
Mr. Cradville filed an ethics complaint against Mr. Buca that's not yet been resolved.
Okay.
Seems to be inappropriate for him to sit on that until it's resolved.
Okay, so, does he understand, Mr. Cradville, they're, they're, they're replacing him because he filed an ethics complaint against him, so he will not be serving in that capacity until his hearing, I guess, is that correct, am I correct in saying that, that, on that application? Yes?
The planning director hasn't recommended anything regarding the, the attorney, the attorneys decided to
Okay.
not proceed in that, and this episode, but Mr. Cradville made a complaint.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's, uh...
This is a legal, this is a legal decision, not, not, not Mr. Patterson's decision.
Understood, um, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Smell Piven, should I also make a brief? Um, I first wanna start off by asking, being this October first, what's the success rate on the Breakfast by the Bell program? I didn't hear any talk about it since it's been, has it been re-implemented this year? Have, what was the success rate from last year?
Can, can we comment on that, Mr. Brown, please?
Uh, yes, I can only confirm that it has been restarted at all of the schools, I don't, I can't say exactly every school, but they have expanded the number of elementary schools where breakfast after the bell is, um, being conducted. I don't know anything about the success of it, except participation, of course, is a hundred percent now.
Yeah. That's a pretty good success.
Does anyone know the success, like, as far as, 'cause I think it was geared to academics, and it was also geared to nutrition, so the kids' grades improved?
Well, I, I would think that might be a question for the Board of Education, they would have this, we, we wouldn't have those statistics here, they would have those statistics. He just said that it's a hundred percent participated, so that, every kid is, every kid's involved in it, that, that, that they're involved in it, but as far as are they doing better in school, I, we don't have that information here, I don't think, I think it would be better of asking the superintendent of schools, or, or somebody at any one of the schools, uh, how they're doing it from that.
Is it possible you could eventually maybe obtain that information, just try?
Sure, I think, I, we can interrogate that.
Sounds, okay.
Yes, sir.
Also, um, I gave, I said I was, you know, was gonna come in with any police talk for five months, and that time is up, I said that in April. Um, first of all, I wanna, um, ask, because I, you know, I run, run different cities and townships, it's New Brunswick, it's the only place that I see that the squad car, patrol cars have one light. Like, you know, they actually drive, there's an SUV in front, they drive around, probably for the last few months.
You mean one headlight?
One headlight, yeah.
One headlight?
You actually think?
Huh? Do you think the other headlight is out?
Yeah, the headlight's out.
Do you know what car number it was?
I didn't check the, it's an SUV that the headlights been out for a minute, I almost wanna pull the guy over and give him a ticket.
You got the, you got the car number, we'll know what it is, and they took care of it.
Take the ball, figure out what it is, and we'll take the ball.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Check the car before you take them out, that's what I, you know, that's what I say.
Okay.
Also, um, I wanna also mention, you know, just this past Friday, some young, some young men called me up to, and that, I really, you know, I was a little upset, I had everything with that, they called me up to a, a video shoot that took place in a park, and ultimately, they didn't have a permit, I guess, so they set some equipment up, you know, I found out once I got there that, I guess they didn't go through the proper channels initially, somewhere, they came here, tried to get a permit, and whatever happened, it didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't successful. So, you know, in the midst of the video, I guess they were filming, we had about forty, about forty-five teens in a park, you know, dressed nice and camera, it was camera time. What bothered me is, I looked to the left of me, I see not only patrolmen, but I see the entire anti-crime unit walking, this is a Free City Park crime.
Oh, Friday.
It's Friday. The, the entire anti-crime unit, they all parked their vehicles, and started walking towards the park, and such like, and almost like an intimidating manner. I basically, I'll say intimidating, 'cause I recorded them actually walking up, and it's intimidating manner, and, um, one of the officers who, I'd like to, I would actually ask Captain Miller if I would sit down with him and these two officers that taunt, go around taunting community members, he said it was totally up to them, he couldn't force them. You know, well, the, the two of the officers, they come, and, you know, taunt as normal, and the problem I had with that was, you know, they were there in a split second to close that video shoot down, but this same city that I asked the dumb officers a week prior to come out to National Night Out and just say hi to the community, they told me it was too, they were too busy to come to National Night Out and speak to the community, but you had all this law enforcement there to stop a camera crew from shooting video. To me, that's a double standard, what is the city standard? I'm confused, that totally threw me off, I was flabbergasted, to see that many, not only that anti-crime unit, to where, you know, these are plainclothes officers who probably set surveillance up, do undercover work, they're willing to risk their identity to stop a video shoot? Please help me understand how does the city work?
Mr. Piven, that, that's your assessment of what happened, that's just your side of the story, now, I don't know if that happened.
Okay.
You're saying that happened? I don't know, you could, you could say you saw three bears outside before you came in the room, I don't know if that actually happened, you, you're, this is your assessment of what happened that day.
Okay.
I, I, I really doubt that it was the police, it was, it sounds like it was a good, it was a video.
Well, well, would you believe my camper?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it'd be, I mean, it's hard, I mean, you were saying you, well, you videoed them and, and video taped, and it looks, and it looks like in the video that they're, that they're, that they're, that they're intimidating?
Well, they're definitely intimidating, but, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, I stood my ground, and I explained to them, I'm like, well, what would you rather have these teens doing? You know, doing this, or, and they ultimately, they didn't, they didn't stop the video shoot, but they stood there, the anti-crime unit stood there and taunted, made fun of the people there, you know, you know, and, and which is crazy, because I'm on a, I'm on a, uh, one of the detectives, they're, I'm on a sickle cell campaign, sickle cell anemia campaign. I'm pushing sickle cell anemia real hard, because it's a predominantly black disease, and it's not too much awareness being drawn to it, so I'm pushing sickle cell very hard. And, one of the guys that I advocate, and we go different places advocating about sickle cell, one of the officers actually made a smart remark to him. They, they teased him, you know, 'cause he gained weight because of medication, and I'll get the officer's name, but he gained weight because of medication, he was on a crutch, 'cause he's need, because of the medication and sickle cell complications, he's gonna need a hip replacement, so he's on a crutch, and they made fun of him out there in that park. These are New Brunswick officers, man, what are you, you're getting fat, why you getting so fat, what are we, you in a car accident? These are law enforcement agents, that I asked to come out to speak to the community and, 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 and build some type of community relations, they rejected that, but they'll come into a park and taunt, and taunt a person who has a disease.
Mr. Piven, if they, if they did that, and, and, and if you're saying, well, it's true, and they did that, then, then, then they should, they should be ashamed of themselves for doing, for acting that manner. I, 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 you know, if we wanna have a hearing over it, or whatever, I mean, you know, if they're doing that, and all the kids are around there, it's not right.
Okay.
And that, that's the truth of the matter, but like I said, that's your one assessment of, of the situation that happens.
My assessment.
And I, I, well, I'm just saying that there's no one on the other side here to defend themselves, saying that that didn't happen or did happen. Right? I mean, somebody could come up here and just start talking, uh, you know, stuff about you, and I, and I said, well, or saying that you said something, and I said, well, I know you say that, you're not here to defend it.
Should I bring, should I bring a kid in here on this?
No, I'm just saying, I, I understand.
I'm not showing up, next week, next week, next week, you, you advocate together, I'll bring him in.
Okay.
I'll bring him in.
Okay.
And, and, and I'll have him mention the officer who did it.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll take it from him.
And like I said, if they did that, and it's true, and I'm not saying you're, you're, you're not telling the truth, I'm saying it's not right that they did that, that's what I'm saying, it's not right that they, they did that. Okay?
I have another question, but this is my last question.
Okay, your time is up.
All right, well, okay, I'll get it, first five minutes.
Well, listen, why don't you finish up, probably?
No, no, no.
There's no first five, that doesn't happen anymore, there's no second and first five.
Why doesn't it happen?
There's five minutes on every, then everybody talks, it's a city law, this is a law in the city, you have a copy of the ordinance, anybody here?
Please give me a copy.
We have a copy, it was adopted almost fifteen years ago, we've been breaking the law ever since here, you get five minutes to talk on the resolutions, you get five minutes to talk on the ordinances, excuse me, I'm talking.
Sir?
Excuse me. Five minutes to talk on the resolutions, and you get five minutes to talk on public comment, that's the law, that's been adopted here long before I got here, so, I'm, I wanna let you finish up, though, so why don't you just finish?
All right, when I finish, can you give me a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Okay. My last problem is, is it possible that I can have a meeting with Police Director Anthony Caputo?
That, that is up to Anthony Caputo and Anthony Caputo's office, I don't run Anthony Caputo's office here, I, I, I cannot demand any having a meeting with you.
Can Captain Miller relay the message that I would like?
Absolutely, I'm gonna relay the message for you, I'm gonna relay it, uh, for all of you, absolutely.
I'll relay the message.
Thank you.
Okay, 'cause I've been requesting a meeting with Anthony Caputo probably for the last three years.
Okay.
Okay, and the problem I have is, there was a situation that took place September fifteenth, it was a Monday, I got a phone call from a gentleman, right? And he said to me that the North Brunswick Police Department harassed him. He showed me a videotape of the North Brunswick Police Department breaking his window, and actually ultimately snatching him out of the car. I got irate, I got irate, you know, so, I, I'll admit, you know, I, I was, I was very upset, so what I did was, I contacted media, so now I contacted my friends at, you know, uh, NBC, CBS, and, you know, and, and then ultimately, there were a bunch of, uh, news cars running around North Brunswick. All Monday. Before I took that action, I went to the Middlesex County Police, I mean, Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office to speak to Mr. Andrew Carey. They wouldn't let me through the door, homey home, just crazy is, I seen Police Director Anthony Caputo coming out, just walking past me. So, fast forward, I left the prosecutor's office, called, contacted media, now we're in North Brunswick on all types of streets, we're doing interviews, and all of a sudden, I get a phone call from the North, uh, the captain of North Brunswick, "Tremel, come in, I'd like to show you something." Come in, North Brunswick, sit me down, give me one second, I'm gonna get the police director. I met the North Brunswick Police Director in about an hour, I meet, I meet Ken, great guy, Kenny McCorrigan, act fine guy, you know, we're actually gonna be doing things to implement, we're gonna run a, a class to implement procedure in North Brunswick later on, but anyway, I met Kenny, he came to me, "Tremel, I'd like to show you something." He takes me upstairs, "Need anything to drink?" I said, "I'm fine." All right, he said, "Well, let me show you this," he put the tape in, it actually showed an entirely different story, from when the cop actually stopped him, to when a young man was pulled out of the car, so it was a total, so I couldn't continue on with the media and, uh, you know, vass these officers, because I had the total story, but the moral of that is, a lot of times, I don't get the total story, and I've been asking to meet with a police director for three years, New Brunswick couldn't grant me that, but I meet the North Brunswick Police Director in one hour. What does that say about this law enforcement agency? What does this say about the city in a whole? And not only that, I built a, I built a, 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 a level of communication, now we communicate back and forth with issues, if, if, if there's an issue in North Brunswick, before I jump the gun, I have a personal, I can contact the director, directly, personally. I've never even had, said a word to the police director in New Brunswick that I've been requesting to speak to for the last three years.
Okay, Mr. Piven, we will definitely let her know, you might have a meeting with her, we'll get your message across.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Brown, you're coming back to the microphone again.
I just, there's one question that I, I forgot to ask.
My first mistake is gonna be kindness with you, I can see this direction.
Same, same as last time, so, uh, last time you said this was an important issue, there's two hundred and ninety tickets, as of May twenty fourteen, that have been assigned to New Brunswick Police Officers, and, uh, never issued, never recalled, nothing's happened for them for a hundred and eighty-one days, at which point they ought to be recalled. I've asked multiple times, what is the explanation for this? And how many of these tickets have actually been recalled of the two hundred and ninety tickets that are missing in action?
Captain Miller, do you have any information on these figures?
I don't, I don't have the number, I did request the number from the court, and they haven't gave it to me yet, but I do believe, um, we did get a correspondence from the court, um, from the judge, explaining the issue to you, and I think it's all explained there, I'm, I'm not gonna go through it, you have it, I don't know.
Is that correct, Mr. Brown, you received something from the judge?
I've received a letter from the new chief judge, who was not around while this happened, and he, uh, you know, expressed that I should refer to, uh, the Police Department for some of my questions, and he also, um, said that, that no changes have been made in the court, so, what changes are being made anywhere about this problem?
I don't think that's all it said, it did not.
It was only a few sentences, it said that there were no changes that were gonna be made, that he looked into it and said the court personnel acted properly.